Good evening. Thanks for joining us tonight for a regular School Board of Directors meeting. The time is now 5:31 and I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, we will call, do a roll call to confirm the attendees. I am President Julie Bocanegra, Vice President Victoria Bradford.
Here.
Director Rob Perkins.
Here.
Director Jenny Gronwald.
Here.
Director Rachel Rogers.
Here.
Superintendent Mike Merlino.
Here.
Administrative Assistant Lori Stroll.
Here.
Great, thank you. Again, good evening. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation 2028 in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, temporarily suspends portions of Open Public Meeting Act. The proclamation requires that all attendance at an open public meeting not take place in person, but occur remotely, including the Board of Directors and the public. Our meeting this evening is conducted via Zoom audio webinar. At this time, I would like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, well, let's just dive right into our meeting. Our first order of business is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Director Gronwald's motions to adopt tonight's agenda. Director Bradford seconds.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. It's an aye for me. Victoria?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. All right, next is special recognition. We have two items that we want to recognize tonight. The first is National Disability Awareness Month. I believe that we have a statement to be read. I'm not sure who is reading which one. I know that there's two. Rob's reading the disability awareness one. Perfect, Rob, you want to go ahead and do that for us?
I do. National Disability Awareness Month. Evergreen Public Schools is a school district and workplace welcoming the talents of all people, including people with disabilities. In this spirit, Evergreen Public Schools recognizes October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month to raise awareness about disability issues and celebrate the value and talents people with disabilities add to our schools, workplaces, and communities. And this month, we renew our dedication to furthering the inclusion of people with disabilities in our schools and the workforce. We affirm the Evergreen Public Schools commitment to an inclusive community for all.
Great, thanks, Rob. All right, any thoughts or comments? This kind of goes along with all of our messaging that we have in place and that we continue to do our workaround.
So I think it dovetails nicely with our trajectory on equity. I remember when we did this recognition last year, it was either the city or the county, I can't remember which entity actually put it on, but there was a presentation of awards in connection with Disability Employment Awareness Month. I ended up in some conversations with graduates of the completion program who were gainfully employed with the county. It really demonstrated that there were programs and policies, procedures in place to recognize this in our system already. And it turned into a really good conversation. The gentleman I talked to was concerned about how a program that he had enjoyed had changed. And I think we were able to resolve his concerns with that. We just had, it's really kind of a shame that the pandemic persists and we can't gather together to recognize this more formally.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, or should we move on to Principals Month?
I guess I would just like to say that I, you know, I appreciate that we specifically point this and, you know, mentioned this in our board meeting and that this isn't just physical disabilities, but, you know, in addition to learning disabilities, which a lot of our students have within our district. So this is, you know, inclusion of them as well in our continued hard work at our special education services and providing kids with educational disabilities as well as physical disabilities, education that they all, everybody deserves.
That's a great point. So, all right, well, with that then, why don't we move right into Principals Month? We have a special proclamation to read and I believe Director Gronwald is going to take us through that one.
Yes. The State of Washington proclamation. Whereas principals create hope for each and every student in their buildings by leading culture, systems, and learning. And whereas principals work tirelessly each day as visionaries, assessment experts, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special program administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives. And whereas principals work collaboratively with both teachers and district officials to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. And whereas the Association of Washington School Principals, AWSP, honors such exemplary principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students as well as their exemplary contributions to the profession. And whereas Principals Month gives an opportunity to honor and recognize the contributions of all school principals and assistant principals to the success of each and every student in Washington schools, our most valuable resource. Now, therefore, I, Jay Inslee, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Principals Month in Washington, and I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. Sign this 30th day of September 2020, Governor Jay Inslee.
Thanks, Jenny. And I would say that principals have even more challenging job right now and probably moving into the future as we face the global pandemic and just all the new factors that go into, you know, now kind of being that social distance officer as well and doing all of those other roles that they probably never imagined that they would have to do.
And we have some pretty amazing principals in our district.
We do. All right, any other comments about Principals Month?
Just to say, here, here, and it's never been harder to do K-12 education this year and they're bringing professionalism and competence in space. Just the same thing that I'd say any week about any of the groups of our employees.
All right. Next up is the Board Consent Agenda. We will entertain a motion for approval.
Director Gronwald moves that we approve the Board's consent agenda.
Director Perkins, seconds.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. It's an aye for me. Victoria?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And Rachel?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move into the Superintendent Consent Agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Director Bradford moves for approval of the Board or of the Superintendent Consent Agenda.
Director Gronwald, seconds.
All right, moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye for me. Victoria?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so next on our agenda is the Superintendent Report. So for this, we're going to turn it over to Superintendent Merlino.
Yes. I guess I would start by kind of expanding a little bit on the recognitions today. I would expand, starting with the Disability Awareness Month. Just, you know, a lot of the first students that we've seen in our buildings have been students on IEPs and our initial, a lot of our initial staff, our teachers and paras have been folks that are supporting those students. And I think that thanks to our staff needs to go out. I've had an opportunity the last weeks to visit a lot of our schools. I've been to all of them, but I've been to a lot of our schools and particularly with 49th Street, which will become Hollingsworth Academy. And, you know, the staff that was out front to meet the kids coming off the bus, the staff that are working within the guidelines that have been established from the state and serving our kids every day, honestly, from the beginning, over the summer, from the first day of school. I think we can't give enough thanks to Amber, the leadership that she's provided there, as well as all the staff members that have been there on a daily basis and they're in all of our buildings. And Jay's leadership and the program coordinator. So I would just say thanks to everyone that works to support our kids on IEPs, Principals, National Principals Month. And I agree with what you're saying, Rob. Literally, every, it's like at some point, every group should have their week or their month so that they can be highlighted because there isn't anybody that went to school thinking about, how am I a principal in a pandemic? Or how am I a teacher in a pandemic? Or how am I a para? Or how, and everybody's affected and everybody's taking on work that they weren't expecting that they would take on. And I've always believed, I mean, the teacher's job obviously is so significant in what we do, but I think that the principal job in a school district is one of the most important jobs from the perspective of setting the tone and expectations and what we're trying to do in a building as well as, you know, when you're in a district our size, you got people that don't even necessarily understand that they're part of a school district because you've got schools, 30-some schools out there and everybody's kind of doing their own work at the same time, trying to be part of a bigger system. So what the principal does on a daily basis is bring the vision of the school district back to their building and then also convey what's happening in their schools back to the district to help frame what we need to be doing. So I really appreciate, I have been saying a lot, you know, we, I came into this position as an interim saying that, you know, our principals are our experts and we need to receive their feedback as much as we possibly can. And as we work through the issues that we work through on a daily basis right now and as we start thinking about hybrid, regardless of when we get to hybrid, it's critically important that our relationships, that our, the feedback we receive from the principal is listened to and honored and that we support what they're doing. They're important because they're talking with teachers on a daily basis and getting feedback from teachers. And they're that conduit back to us. So it's, these are unbelievably difficult jobs, unbelievably difficult times that we're dealing with. And I just can't echo enough the appreciation for what's happening in our buildings from the teachers to the classified staff that's still in our buildings. So, and I agree, every week, I don't know what it is next month, but we, even if there isn't a recognition, we need to figure out who it is that we're going to recognize and highlight what they do. And I feel like we just need to figure that out. There might be Governor Inslee's proclamations, but I think we need to just find our school board proclamation or Lori or, you know, the mine, anybody, because it doesn't, it's a bus driver's, it's food service workers, it's the teachers, it's the translators. I mean, it just doesn't stop. This is an unbelievably difficult time and I appreciate the effort that's going in from so many people. And I appreciate our classified staff that's just waiting to be called to come back because they can't wait to come back and try to serve our kids too. So, anyway, all that being said, every week on Tuesday, at some point in the morning, we get our update on our new number of transmissions per 100,000. I think we've been saying recently that those numbers have kind of been ticking up. The positive tests have been ticking up. We went over 95 with that release today. I don't know the exact number, but it's over 95. So basically, we've gone from where we had a number of stable weeks in the 60s in July and August to low 70s. By the time we got to September 21st, we had ticked up over 75. Then we went to 86 and now we're at 95. So certainly, the direction isn't trending in the right direction. And remember, our MOU talks about four weeks in moderate and then we go to hybrid. So this, basically, at this point in time for K through five would put us out to, I think it's November 9th would be potentially the first week. But realistically, the direction that we're going isn't the direction that we want to be going to be able to get to hybrid. Thankfully, we do have the ability to bring in small groups in any of these three categories, low, moderate, or high. In this time, last week, we moved to bringing in kindergarten students across the district. We'd started the week before with the four schools, Sifton, Image, Crestline, and York. I think it was York. And then, since then, we've gone across the district. I will say, I have been talking with principals and meeting with principals and there is very positive feedback that we're receiving from both families and from our staff. I think our staff is enjoying the opportunity to have students on site and bringing them in. So I think that that's a wonderful thing. And we just have to continue to kind of work on that. One of the things that we've been talking about is it will be so long before we get to the point where we're in hybrid that when we have the opportunity to be in hybrid, all of the planning and all of the work that needs to go on behind the scenes needs to be in place so that when we have the ability to go to hybrid at the appropriate time, and there's a lot of things to consider with that when you get to elementary, you get to secondary, secondary schedules are certainly a part of that. But we need to do the work, again, talking about what the principals do on a daily basis. We need to be doing the work to make sure that we're ready when that time comes because there just isn't any question that our students benefit from being on site. I think our staff actually benefits from having our students on site. And our families certainly support that. All of that said, being done following the safety guidelines that the Department of Health, that the Clark County Department of Health has put out around masks, around social distancing, around washing our hands, around the groups. So it's, it's an uphill battle that we're working on. I think there are at least one, maybe more. I was seeing, I know that Kelso is in K-2, actually in hybrid right now. We're kind of watching what they're doing. They went to hybrid when they were in moderate. I think they spiked into high and they're continuing, is my understanding, in that range. I've seen some articles and emails. Castle Rock is moving forward, Kalama is moving forward. So we kind of need to see how some of that's working and if they're in high, if they're doing that, how they're doing that and what they're doing to make that happen. At times, it feels like it's a real struggle to get kids back in, even though we know that this is what's best for them and what's right for our kids. But we're continuing to work, continuing to monitor. Tomorrow, we'll have another Zoom meeting with Clark and Cowlets County with Dr. Melnick, Dr. Crager. I think today, the governor put out some more guidelines around athletics in schools, athletic activities in school. We saw an email this afternoon that maybe clarifies things a little bit more, allows for maybe some more practicing, kind of identifies what would be considered low risk, medium risk, and high risk as far as the sport is concerned. But unfortunately, I got to be honest with you. I think a lot of these guidelines that they're putting out are not really making it easier. I think it's going to be very difficult for us to have kids participating in athletics based upon some of the language that's coming out. And it's, you know, it's tough, it's tough. There isn't any question that it's affecting kids, it's affecting our staff, it's affecting everyone. And we, hopefully, will start to see some positive movement in this case transmission and give us more clarity on bringing kids back. I taped a thing last week that kind of updated everyone on that. Every week, we get the update in terms of when we might be able to get back to hybrid. And so I think it's, that's where we're at with that. The earliest we would be in elementary at this point, I think, is the week of November 9th. If we have a kind of significant turnaround, at some point, we may have to have a conversation about if we keep going week by week by week and we're getting closer to Christmas, it may very well be that by the time, if things went our direction, it could be a week or two before Christmas. We may make a, need to think about whether or not that's for a week. Does that make sense? Or does it make sense? Because that might be a Christmas present for everybody if we were able to even get back a week before Christmas. But we'll continue talking about that. Enrollment is another thing that we continue to watch. Our enrollment, typically in the month of October, you see enrollment increase across the district. You look at last year's October, I think we were up about 150 kids. We're down maybe about 30, 20, 30 kids from the preliminary, in the preliminary October numbers, which isn't something we typically see. Our elementary, one thing I will say is our kindergarten enrollment is, did increase in the month of October, but all other grades, 1 through 5, have decreased. That's not something we typically see. I would say middle and high school look more similar to what we might see. But at this point in time, I think the estimates in terms of revenue impact for us still is probably in the $15 million range for us. That's within basic education, primarily basic education, special education, and transportation. One of the other fallouts from where we're at right now is the furloughs that have occurred in Evergreen and across, really, the region. Most districts in southwest Washington participated in the unemployment pool with ESD 112. And they have increased by six times the unemployment rate. So the .002 that we typically pay on gross earnings of all employees has been increased to, instead of .002, it's up to .012. And each of those .002 is probably somewhere around a half of, about $450,000. So we've seen, we will see some significant increases in what we're paying into the unemployment pool as a result of the furloughs. Unfortunately, that is just something that we expected was going to happen. I will say that in conversations with principals, that as we look to bringing students back, as we look to bring them back in small groups and in hybrid preparations, we are going to need to be bringing some of our classified staff back. So I expect that we will likely call some of our classified staff back in the next weeks as we, as we work on that. I think that it's, it's a difficult time, but I think we have to continue to talk about the hope of bringing students back. I think it's wonderful that we brought the kindergartners back. I think our students and our families are very happy with that. We need to look at ways we can follow the guidelines and expand on that. Because I know that we're getting really great, positive response from those events occurring. And we will be back. At some point, we will be back, whether that's hybrid. And at some point, we'll be back full-time and we will be populating these brand-new schools. I mean, we've got wonderful facilities. We were lucky enough to have Representative Harris and Representative Stonier tour Emerald and see some of what's happening in that building and participate. We've got great things in our school district, we've got great things happening in our school district. And I think our staff is going the extra mile to try to get kids supported and served even in this difficult time, whether it's remote, whether it's in small groups, whether we're planning for hybrid. I'm uplifted by the work that happens. It's something we always have to remember because we're working through very difficult times. But we have to remember, we're going to be back. We will be back. I'm not exactly sure what the path is, but we will be back. And I'm excited for that day, when that comes. I know that we're taping another virtual groundbreaking, I think, or we're doing some virtual groundbreakings for Mountain View. Mountain View is under construction. One piece of really good news that we got last night was the city of Vancouver did vote to surplus their property, which allows us to kind of move forward with the facility at Evergreen, the baseball softball facility at, next to Burton. So we will work in, and I think even out of that, I believe that the resolution had them take some of the proceeds from the sale of the property and invest those, some of the dollars back into the Evergreen School Park, which is a park just to the east of Evergreen High School. That's a very wooded area. They want to start to try to develop some of that and bring trails and make that a more appealing area for the neighborhood. So we may get some support there on top of having the ability to add some of these facilities down below Evergreen High School for baseball and softball. So we got all kinds of great things happening, we got a great staff. I appreciate all of you on the school board because you work yourself significantly hard as well to support everything that's going on and making yourself available for everything. So we got to stay positive, we got to keep moving forward and figure out ways to support our kids and work with everybody in the system. So thank you to everyone, that's what I have for tonight, Julie.
Thanks, Mike. Does anybody have any questions or anything for Mike right now?
Mike, I got a question about the enrollment numbers. Are those off, you said we were 20 to 30 down, was that off the September count or the budget?
September count, not budget. We're, I guess what I'm saying is, what I've been saying for a while is, we don't really know what, like, usually you can look at September's enrollment and have a pretty decent idea of what's going to happen the rest of the year based upon previous years. And I've been saying, I don't know that we can do that this year because we don't know what trends of enrollment we're going to see. Typically, we will see in the month of October, an increase in enrollment of 100 to 150. We've probably seen a drop of maybe 30. So what I would say is that, that to me means we got more downside potential in terms of the enrollment as the year goes on with respect to enrollment. Because this is just not obviously going to be any year like any year we've typically participated in.
Right. Second question, you said there was a $15 million impact. Does that include the increase in unemployment pool costs?
That would not include that. The variable is, one of the biggest variable, I think, right now is going to be transportation, to understand exactly what that means. But if we're, you know, if we're talking 1,000-ish kids, special ed trend, you know, we're talking probably 13 to 16, 17 million in that range. We've got one month of payroll.
I'm going to start wrapping up your workday and plan for dinner.
And looking at that one month of payroll, that's not really enough to get the trends. But in the next few months, we'll start looking at what do we think we're spending versus the revenues and some of the reductions we've made, how do they support us? But I have also said all along, you know, our interest is in having kids on site safely. And when kids are on site, obviously, we're bringing staff in. It's, but we need to do that. I mean, we're here for kids. We need to get kids in appropriately and safely. We need to look at how we can provide transportation to try to support that. And so it's not going to be an easy year, there is any question about that. But we'll, I think we're up to the challenge of serving kids and managing our funds. We did a, I've told, I've talked previously about a bond sale, which we will do later in the month. Myself and Jennifer Jacobson, our Director of Accounting and Purchasing, participated in a ratings call and, you know, we're sharing the things we're doing in terms of trying to deal with the enrollment shortfalls. They participate, the individuals that do the ratings participate with other districts. I think that they were, they had a positive reaction to the way we're at least trying to deal with the financial issue. they had a positive reaction to the way we're at least trying to deal with the financial issues that we're dealing with. And I think their feeling was that we're probably more proactive in that than, than some of the other areas that they've had conversations with in these types of sales. So that makes me feel good that, I, I do think that we're trying to get ahead and trying to deal with things rather than, well, let's wait and see. And I think we've taken them on right from the beginning. I think that's difficult to do that, but I think it's something that we had to do. So I think that that's at least some positive feedback from that perspective. Which is unfortunately actually negative feedback because it means that we've got people that are furloughed and, I mean, it's, it's a difficult time.
There was an, there was an employment security program to help people that were furloughed collect the difference in unemployment. If the employer participates, I can't remember its name, but do you know what I'm talking about?
Well, we have the WorkShare program.
I think that's the name, yeah.
Yeah. So the WorkShare program is a program that we've used with, with our secretary group. The, you know, the federal government not doing anything to extend the CARES Act. I mean, I think that the supplemental unemployment ran out early September, late August. And so I think our folks haven't been able to participate in that the way that some others were over the summer. We are participating in the unemployment program. And it's one that the federal government reimburses directly, the, the other half. So our employees are working four hours and then the federal government. But it's not a complete reimbursement. It's a reduced amount. And I don't, it's not, I mean, it's, it's, it's difficult even, it, it's difficult for our secretaries. There's no question about it.
Thanks, Julie. That's all I had.
All right. Well, I was going to say that I was happy to see on the personnel reports that we did have some of those furloughed employees. Looks like they're coming back as we have kids back in schools. So.
Yeah, we've, we've brought back staff and, and we'll be bringing back middle school and some high school staff back to support our COVID rooms and, and just have some additional hours on-site to deal with just issues as they come up, kids coming in, the attestations. There's, I mean, the, the reality is in, in hybrid, if you ask principals, they, they need all their staff back and then they need additional staff. So it's not like they just need the staff that they have. They need staff plus. And we're in a situation where you, you don't, you can't ignore $15 million worth of revenue reduction. When, particularly when you have a fund balance that's, you know, we don't have a significant, we have an appropriate fund balance, but we don't have a, we don't have a fund balance that's been one built to deal with the global pandemic and and a 5% to 10% enrollment drop in a, in a one-year cycle. I mean, we, in, since the time, the interim till today, when that occurred, we've actually had, we will likely have to reduce more from our budgets in a two-year period than we did in the four-year period that we did from 09, 10, 08, 09 really through 11, 12. And the really unfortunate thing is, I know every one of you and all of us believe in transparency and trying to be as transparent as possible. And basically, we had to wait until the first day of school to talk about the biggest reduction in expenditures potentially in any of the years I've been in the district. And likely in any time that the district's even maybe been in existence, short of maybe failing the levy in the 70s, but my guess is the levies weren't that big in the 70s. So this is a extremely difficult time. And I really do think everyone's doing their best to try to make sure that we're getting the feedback that we need. And sometimes it doesn't feel like that happens. And certainly not the way that we typically would do it. I, I think, I, I think we mentioned, sometimes the meetings run together. One thing that is a positive is that the state shortfall went from 8.8 billion down to maybe 4.5 billion or in that range over a three-year period. So that's a positive, at least, you know, potentially these concerns about 21, 22 and how bad we might have to think about cutting beyond, maybe it's mitigated to some extent. We'll see how that goes in the legislative session.
All right. Thanks, Mike. All right. So we'll move into board comments. Any of the members of the school board have anything that they'd like to say?
I just wanted to mention that I received a call today from someone who had been at the city council meeting, that's a member of the parks commission or board, whatever they're called, who said that Sue and company did a really good job in talking about how, what that impact's going to be for the district. And, and so I really appreciated their work and in sharing what the benefits were to have that become part of our purview.
Can I say, can I add to that? I apologize to Sue for not mentioning that. And Kale Pylant was participating in that as well. Actually listened in. They did an amazing job. Sue did a great job of explaining and outlining. Sue actually knew the slides better than the city staff did. Because every time somebody would ask a question about, I'd like to see this or that, well, that's slide 13, or that's slide 18, or that's like, it was, it was pretty awesome to see. But they did a tremendous job of answering questions and presenting from our perspective why it was important. It was, it was, it was great. I agree. And I apologize to Sue and Kale both for not saying that when I mentioned the good news. Thank you for saying that, Victoria.
Well, I'm super excited about it. And I'm glad that they, they got the agreement done because, I mean, not only are we going to have, you know, fantastic baseball and softball facilities for our entire district to use, but you know, when you think about what the impact it can have on your community, because, you know, we'll have the kind of facilities that could draw state tournaments. And the, you know, economic impact that it brings for our entire community when you bring on those people from out of town. So I think it's exciting all the way around, not only for the kids in our district, they're going to be able to use that, but just statewide and the impact it brings for our local community. And to have a nice park there too. So it's a win. I was able to finally join in on the courageous conversations last week, so I was happy to get the training done. About 90 people in the group, a lot of, a lot of teachers, a lot of counselors, librarians. There were some classified staff too, from the district office that were all involved. So it was a lot of fun to hear different perspectives and really good training.
I agree. It was some of the best training I've ever been to. Hi Clarissa, I was just about to talk about this. I, I ended up in a lot of conversations over the last two weeks, in part because of the general assembly. Was the general assembly, but this, there's been, since the beginning of the pandemic, this constant dialogue back and forth about the pandemic and schools and, and how it's just roiling everybody. The general assembly went off very well. They had more districts and people there conducting votes remotely than they've ever had in the past in person. And probably the cheaper travel had something to do with that. And while there were glitches and there were more than a few, they accomplished it. And I was able to take the positions that passed and prioritize them according to the priorities that you all gave me last time. And I put that into the, into the agenda item for our workshop so that we can all look at that together. And if there are, if I made a mistake or you'd like us to be privileging a position above another position rather than, than the order that I'm taking it in, I have a couple of days to correct that. And I think they'll listen to me about that. But the general assembly was really heavy on matters of equity. There were a lot of votes taken about legislative positions in response to the pandemic and such as the transportation and enrollment problems. And there are going to be a couple of bills coming up. Draft language that I'll share with you in the workshop. I also met with that Fall Collaboration Group for Parents and Educators that we talked about last time. Didn't happen on the Thursday. It happened the following Monday. It was been about an hour and a half listening to students and parents mainly talk about how difficult it is for them. The students who spoke highlighted how difficult it is to just be at home and not have, I call them happy thoughts, you know, the things that you need to have in order to. The group has got some drama kids, as in students of drama, as well as choir students, band students. And they really miss being able to meet and make music and, and art together. And that came through loud and clear. I was able to clear up some misunderstandings and some perceptions that come from not having the whole picture. Talked about the sports guidelines, which thanks for letting me know that they've changed. I'll be able to say something about that too, but it doesn't sound like it's changed for more participatory participation. And the response that I got from the parents who participated and who watched the recording later on was very positive. And I think it showed, I think it showed what's possible if, if we're out there as members of the board. Listening is pretty much all, or providing clarity where we can. It served and they thanked me a lot for being able to just listen to them and carry that stance back. Let's see. This is general assembly. We had a board docs training. Jenny was there too. Maybe she can talk about that part. And I am really excited to be participating this week in developing a social and political expression message, a multi-district message. To go out about equity, that Clarissa, I guess Clarissa called the meeting. Is that true? And to be able to take our ideas of equity and put it into this multi-district statement that we can publish. Let me see. Some other conversations went on that we can talk about later on, but I won't take up all the time. Legislative committee meeting is this weekend, so I'll be involved in that. And if you have positions or thoughts that you want WASDA to consider, I'll listen to that and carry it in. And next week is the Online Learning Advisory Committee meeting, which given this year should be more interesting than ever before. I'll be in the Zoom for that. And that's what's been, what's coming up from my end.
All right. Thanks, Rob. Anything else for board comments?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll mention what Rob kind of alluded to real quick. Rob and I actually, it was last week, were given the opportunity to participate in WASDA, some of WASDA's onboard training, which is a training program that they're putting together for new board members. So our, our upcoming conference is no longer in person, so they had to try to pilot this training for new board members online. So we were given the opportunity to participate, saving us quite a bit of money in taking the classes and pilot, so we pilot, we're piloting this program for them and giving them feedback. So we learned about the deciphering the district's budget. So we learned codes, funding codes, expense codes, how to read them, what each digit set is for them. We also got some printouts that have kind of guidance in them, you know, giving us, because it's the state of Washington's codes, so they're all very similar. So that was really great. I had wished I had gotten in on, I'm sure a lot of us had wished we had gotten some training more like this from the WASDA when we onboarded or when we started, instead of just going over governance and making sure we, we learn Robert's rules and, and that kind of thing, because the budgets in the districts are huge. So that was a three-hour training that was actually really insightful and I, I really enjoyed the, the way that they provided it. So I'm looking forward, there's actually, I think, three total. So I'm signed up for all three, but one of them kind of conflicts with our, I believe it's our bond meeting, so I may have to excuse myself and then watch that, or the replay on that one, so I can take this class. And also just a quick note, I am a parent of a kindergartner and so I have, I had my child back in school twice a week for two hours. This is his third week back. He actually is, was in one of the pilot schools. And I can say that he is excelling because he's more engaged in the schoolwork when it's not just online. He knows at the end of the week, he gets to go to class for two hours. And he absolutely loves it and, and he's thriving. And that wouldn't have been possible without this, this hybrid. So I just, you know, I want others, people in the community to know that it isn't, we're not making these decisions and they're not, you know, living up to them. We are, I, I have actually sent my child back to school in this hybrid model to test this out. So, and it's, it's going fantastic. They are very cautious. They have learned how to do air hugs and air high fives and, and it's the new norm for them right now. And it, you know, and they, they don't run up to their teachers and give them big hugs like most kindergarteners do right now. And they're, they're very aware of what's going on. And it's, it's good to see and good to know that we're being able to give these parents an opportunity for this. So thank you all for all of your hard work.
I forgot, I'm, I was at a meeting yesterday with the district equity leadership team. Just a continuation to the courageous conversation work and how that's all going to be moving forward. So thank you to that team. They did, they're great.
All right. Anything else?
Just to mention, the training that Jenny and I were at turns out to have been the training that you and Victoria and I were at last, it was one of the early birds last.
I wondered.
Yeah. And I didn't real, they told me that it wasn't, but it turned out to be, which made it a healthy review for me. I was, I was glad to be on that thing.
The next one is foundations of state funding, three hours.
Oh, they corrected that. There's a, they're sending new information. They're sending a new packet. They actually, there's an email that's, that's the wrong packet.
Oh, did they? Oh, I actually opened it. They send us this and it's sealed and we can't open it until the night of the class. So it's.
Well, I guess we could open that one now.
Well, I accidentally did, but yes. And then also I forgot to mention that I, I, I finished my board assignment and read the 69 essays that were provided for our equity team and the 12 student essays. So that was due by end of day today. And I thought it was going to get real close, but I actually got it all submitted this morning. And I appreciated reading through a lot of those. And, and I look forward to the conversation that that team is going to have in the next couple of days in making decisions.
Some good candidates?
Yes, a lot of very good candidates. A lot of very good insights. And even, I mean, some very brave people that put their name in the ring that you wouldn't have fought wood. But I, I, I really enjoyed reading their comments and the, the courage that it took them to stand up and, and apply for an equity position. So.
That's awesome.
I appreciate hearing about that, yeah. I'm glad you were able to do that.
All right. Sounds like lots of good stuff is happening, lots of hard work. So. All right. Future agenda items. Do we have anything that we want to add to future meetings or agenda topics?
I think it might be a good idea with referendum 90 on the ballot, which is the comprehensive sex education referendum. There's a lot of inaccuracies and falsehoods circulating in the community about what it means for us. And some information about how that referendum, if it's approved, might change things for Evergreen's curriculum would be probably a pretty good idea. I'm not talking about anything long or, or working curriculum or anything, just how would it, answering that question about how it would change things if it passes. And maybe, yeah, that's about it. Because my perception is, is that it's not, it's not going to have a specific impact on us. And.
So are you saying maybe just a, a update on what our current practice is and?
Yeah. There's the curriculum we've adopted and what we've excluded. Addressing some of the reasonable concerns against the idea of comprehensive sex ed and especially talking about parents' access to examine, review the curriculum and get their questions answered and how that procedure works and how it might change if our 90 passes.
Do you want to do that at the next workshop?
If you think.
Probably makes sense, right?
Yeah, if it's going to be on the ballot, because that's probably about the time the ballots come out, so.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good public service.
I would be okay with that, too, if we added it to the next workshop.
Okay. Lori, Lori's got that. We'll take care of it.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thanks, Rob. That was good. Anything else we should add? I feel like there's probably some of our regular stuff that we probably should get back to at some point that.
Are we, are we supposed to ever get back to regular stuff?
Our English stuff, because I said English.
No regular stuff.
Regular stuff, yes. Stuff that we've kind of put on the side.
If there's a way to, if there's a way to do operational expectations reports in a circumstance and condition like this, we could try.
Why, I'm sure.
Have to report with exceptions.
Yeah, we had a, I mean, we had kind of the path of what we were thinking about. I will have to go revisit that. I know that there's the workshop, the, you know, we have kind of a laid out, but we'll need to go back and look at that calendar again.
We will probably have to relook at that at some point and just kind of see where we're at, but.
Yes.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and move on to citizen comments. At this time, we will take comments from citizens. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Just remember, it cannot be legal or personnel in nature. We have four people that have signed up this evening. When we turn, when we bring you in and turn on your microphone, if you'll give us your name and address, and then just remember to keep your comments to under three minutes. First up, we have Representative Paul Harris.
Great, it's good to be with you.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, how you doing? I just want to tell you thank you. I had an opportunity to tour Emerald, your new school, or our new school. And it was just an unbelievable experience to me. It was to see the school, to see how education has changed, to see the technology there, to meet the principal and the assistant principal, Darcy and Michelle, just phenomenal to meet with the teachers and just watch education taking place. I think it was just a beautiful experience. And I want to commend you for, for the work you've done. I was just, it took me back to my days on the school board, serving with Victoria. I don't know that we've done anything, or at least when I was serving, that was quite as transformational as what I saw. And I just want to tell you thank you for that. It was, it was very nice. And I look forward, I don't know if you're going to discuss school-based health clinics, but I want to tell you thank you for setting up the school-based health clinic. I know Monica and I, it was an important issue for us, and I look forward to that. And I just appreciate what you've done there also. And that's really all I have.
Great, thank you so much for joining us tonight, Paul. We appreciate it.
Thanks for visiting our schools, Paul. I'm glad that you were able to see that, because I knew it wouldn't go unappreciated by you after all the time that you've worked on staff for us.
Oh, my God, it was, it was phenomenal. I can't, and I can't wait for us to get back to a normal, to have an open house and for people to see that school is just, it was breathtaking. It was beautiful.
We're excited for you to see Legacy and the 49th Street Academy. I just lost the new name.
Hollingsworth.
Hollingsworth. Hollingsworth. When those come up, when those are finished.
That's a senior moment like I have all the time.
I know, I'm having them a lot lately. But I think you'd be very impressed with what we're going to be doing there. And we're excited for you to see that.
Well, thank you, and truly, it was, it was, it was beautiful. And, and just to watch the education with the kids, with the masks on, well behaved. Things were happening. It was, it was great. It really was. It was great.
And we are talking about the health clinics in the workshop, which is, I think, first on the agenda right after the board meeting, Paul.
Okay. But I just want to tell you thank you for doing that. The health clinic is a priority for me, and I really appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Paul.
It deals with diversity and equity. I think it shows what you're doing. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next up is Amber Lynn Lane. Amber, if you'll give us your name and address when you're on.
My name is Amber Lynn Lane. My address is 11602 Northeast Seventh Circle. Years ago, I packed the boardroom with young musicians and their families. Some played instruments while others sang the famous words of Malala Yousafzai. "One child, one teacher, one book, and one pen can change the world." Some of you were there and may remember that you sang to the students. You sang, "Yes, you can change the world." I still believe they will. The world is different than it was then, but some things are the same. Last spring, I put together videos that were shared district-wide to lift spirits. The song "Count on Me" and the past instrument videos involve teachers throughout the district. Music education is still the heartbeat of learning. We are the community builders. Social, emotional learning without any changes to our curriculum. Yet, all of us high-risk teachers who have requested health accommodations to work from home are having those requests denied. Our options are come in when told or go on leave, risk our lives or our livelihoods. This is inhumane choice, and I don't see how you will possibly fill all the potential vacant specialized positions. If we stay and teach in person due to your zealous requirements, what number of music teacher deaths would you find acceptable? I keep hearing the use of the word equity, and that's great. But when I see policy, it's clear that the district is confusing equity and equality. Forcing the same situation on all teachers is not equitable. Removing barriers to success and giving each individual what they need is equity. The most equitable choice for elementary music education is to keep the learning at home where staff and students are safe. In person, we would be exposed to the entire school or even multiple schools. And many of us are in enclosed spaces with dangerously poor air circulation. Forcing children to constrict their singing and movement when they could be singing and moving freely at home is inequitable. Forcing a single parent with underlying conditions to choose between exposing themselves to the entire school population or going on leave is inequitable. Put your actions behind your words in support of equity for students and staff. I beg you to let us teach in conditions that are truly safe, where students can make music freely. Take our health concerns seriously. I ask again, how many deaths of my colleagues and our loved ones are acceptable to you? My acceptable number is zero. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amber Lynn. All right, next up is Kari Liebert.
Hi there. My name is.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Kari Liebert. My address is 5800 Southeast King Road, Milwaukee, Oregon. And good evening, Evergreen School Board and Superintendent Mike Merlino. My name is Kari, and I am the music teacher at Silver Star Elementary. I have been in Evergreen for eight years and previously have been an itinerant music teacher, spending the majority of my time at Fisher's Landing Elementary School. I am speaking tonight to express my concern over opening up into the hybrid model at the elementary level. I will go over some of the important research out of the University of Colorado Boulder that has studied particles exhaled as performers. COVID-19 is a virus that has a particle size that has been measured at approximately 0.1 micron. The median particle size range for singing is 1.3 microns, and clarinet playing has roughly 0.9 microns as general examples of particle sizing for the study. The following are the recommendations from the study in Phase II. While it is not finished, the data has been widely circulated and is easily found when Googling. Knowing that music teachers in a hybrid model would see a minimum of nine live classes a day with 90 to 100 students from different pods, the following recommendations should be followed. There are five main recommendations based on the findings of the study, including masks, distance, time, airflow, and hygiene. For masks, the recommendations are no talking should occur in the room without a mask being properly worn. Masks should be worn by all students and staff prior to entering the performing arts room. Masks should continue to be worn at all times. Teachers should consider using a portable amplifier to keep their voices at a low conversational volume. Students should also ask questions in a low conversational volume with a mask. Teachers should wear the most efficient mask possible that is readily available, and fit matters. In terms of distance, six feet by six, six feet is the minimum. Students should sit all facing the same direction, back to front, to minimize potential exposure. The time allowed for performing arts should be no longer than 30 minutes, and especially if it is indoors. While it is indoors, there should be an allowed, a minimum of one air exchange prior to the next use of the room. And the recommendation is that three is the best practice. Most, more study is needed to, for prior, to change the recommendation of time. In terms of airflow, outdoor participation in performing arts is best. Open air and allowing for tempting from weather elements. If rehearsal has to be held indoors, the air filtration needs to be at the highest recommended amount according to ashray levels, which is including a filtration level of the filters MERV 13A. In terms of hygiene, there needs to be hand sanitizer, soap and water available for all. And hands should be washed after contact with surfaces and instruments. Instrument areas should be limited for the number of students available to go and access that space. There needs to be 70% alcohol in all wipes that are used to wipe down surfaces before and after touching in the music classroom. And the wipes should be discarded properly upon leaving the instrument area. With all of these protocol recommendations and the expense that is necessary, my professional music educator recommendation is to keep the music remote when the students move into hybrid. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up is Megan Russell. Are you there, Megan?
Yes, I think so. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Go ahead and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Megan Russell. My address is 1842 Northeast 19th Avenue, Portland, Oregon. I teach music at Sunset Elementary School. I have approximately 400 students in 20 classes. Each week, I teach each of my classes live. In addition, I create interactive asynchronous activities for each class to do. Students turn in their work, which I review and respond to. Between planning for my live lessons, teaching them, creating asynchronous content, responding to student work, meeting with colleagues, communicating with parents, and sharing and moderating content on my 20 Google classrooms, a typical workday for me begins around 7:00 a.m., ends around 5:00 p.m., and does not include a duty-free lunch break. This is the only way I'm able to stay on top of my work rather than falling behind. But I do it because it's vital that my students continue to learn music. And this is how to make that happen. I'm concerned about how this will be possible when we transition to a hybrid model. In a live video lesson, my students can sing. They can play instruments made of things they have at home. We will not, in the physical classroom, it's questionable whether we'll be able to sing together safely. We will not be able to play instruments, because my schedule has never included time to sanitize the between classes. And many of our instruments would be damaged by sanitizers anyway. Additionally, if we have a hybrid cohort and a fully online cohort during the same part of the year, my live teaching time would double. This would require eliminating either my asynchronous content or my live lessons with the online cohort, because there simply aren't enough hours in the day to add 50% to my current workload. Either way, my students would be receiving half as much music instruction in the hybrid model as they do in the fully remote model. That model would have me teaching 10 classes a day, which is more than my contract allows. As we plan for how a hybrid model should look, it's important that elementary specialists have representation on the decision-making team, so their job is understood and solutions are realistic. Beyond my instructional concerns, I have serious health concerns about the hybrid model. In hybrid, I would be seeing potentially hundreds of students per week. I would be a conduit between all classes and the school. If one student was infected without their knowledge, I could potentially pass the virus from them to a student in any other class, a student with whom they would otherwise have no contact. This also means that I personally am at risk of infection from every child in the school. Our youngest students in particular are developmentally unprepared to adhere consistently to social distancing and hygiene protocols. As much as I miss my students, I'm very afraid for my safety and theirs when I think about in-person teaching. The risk is high, even for those of us not designated high-risk. There are countless documented cases of young, healthy people dying or facing lasting disability from this disease. I do not want to be among them. Do not want my colleagues or students or their family members to be among them. I hope that you will put our community members' lives and safety above all other considerations as you plan for the rest of our school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Megan. All right, and then the last person that we have signed up on the list is Stephanie Holtman.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Holtman, and I live at 959 28th Court, Washougal, Washington, 98671. Dear Superintendent Merlino and members of the Evergreen School Board, this is my eighth year teaching elementary music in Evergreen, and I love my job. My students love coming to music where they dance, sing, play games, instruments, and I enjoy watching their growth each year. But teaching from home is hard. The tech limitations mean that students have to stay muted, so we're never getting to sing together. I can't send instruments home for them to have that experience. Preparing, pushing out, assessing, and responding to 20 classes is time-consuming, requiring detailed planning to make sure everything is completed in a timely manner, and addresses the varied needs of my students, and follows both the district curriculum guidelines and the SEL needs of my students. I am working harder this year than I have ever worked in my 18 years of teaching. Yet, I would rather keep teaching remotely with all of its downfalls and stressors than try to do my job in person in a COVID reality. You have heard tonight about the studies on the safety of singing in person. Washington Music Educators Association has shared these results with State Superintendent Chris Reichdahl, who has promised to consider these studies in future revisions of the state's guidelines for teaching during COVID. I would urge you to make the same consideration. Elementary music is largely experiential. The students learn music through singing and dancing and playing. This fall, I have been able to provide precisely those opportunities to my students. We sing every lesson, we move creatively, we play games. Students keep coming back for that joyful and aesthetic experience. Once we return to in-person teaching, music class will be drastically diminished in order to maintain safe experiences based on scientific evidence. I have been assured multiple times that all safety considerations will be followed. And my understanding is the EPS plans to utilize a pod system in elementary hybrid. However, even if I teach my current schedule of five classes per day, I will be exposed to five times the number of students daily as the classroom teachers. If I am to see all students live when they're in the building, that increases my exposure to something like 10 times what the classroom teachers will experience. This is not a safe exposure level. What I've not mentioned yet is that I am an individual with multiple high-risk factors for an adverse reaction to COVID-19, which I earned as a result of a stroke in 2019. I've used up all the years of sick leave hoarded for such a rainy day. The current options offered to me by EPS are accept the plan to expose myself to an unsafe number of children each day, engaging activities that increase the risk of COVID transmission, and do so grateful that I still have a job, or take a leave of absence. Why is this the choice I'm forced into? When not only am I perfectly capable and able and well-prepared due to the multiple PD opportunities I've taken advantage of to teach from home, it is also what is safest for me and my students. Also, I have a daughter to raise and feed. I can't afford to take a year off my job simply because my school district refuses to acknowledge my need for a safe working environment. But even less can I afford to die from COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. All right, so at this time, we appreciate everyone and their comments this evening. That ends the regular part of our meeting. We will now go into a recess. We will then reconvene, a short recess, and then for a board workshop. We're going to talk about the school-based health clinic update. We're going to talk about the school-based health clinic update. We're going to get an equity and inclusion update. We'll get a legislative update, superintendent's update, and then a board meeting debrief. Then we will have an executive session following that. So at this point, do you want to take a quick break, or do you want to go right into the workshop? You need a break? Just a couple of minutes? All right, it looks like we're all back. Are we ready to start?
Ready to roll.
Mike, who's leading us through the Student Health Center. Is that Jay?
Yeah.
Okay.
All righty, well, after a very long time, we're getting to the point where we are able to move forward and open the Student Health Center. I put a slide in the workshop which Lori is sharing here. We, I mean, there's a few things that delayed, of course, COVID and the closure being one of them. But in addition to that, we've been working out our agreement with C Mar, who will be our provider. And also, they had to do the application process through the federal government to be approved for its change in scope and sequence, which they actually did for the springtime, but then our closure made it, so they had to get a waiver. And now everything's in place. And as you can see, we are getting medical equipment installed in the center. And we're working with Danny and the Evergreen High School team to begin the process of working with the Evergreen High School community and getting ready to open on the fifteenth. Some of the first things that they're going to be working with us to help address is immunizations and immunization rates and making immunization process more readily available. Holly and her team have made a significant impact in our compliance rate for immunizations this year. And really, it's been the school folks that have helped Holly and everybody do that. But we still have about, I think, five percent of our enrollment who isn't in compliance. And of course, every year that will be changed because of ongoing requirements going into middle school and high school, and then, of course, kindergarten. So anyway, that's one of the things they're going to focus on for us. And then seeing kids and students and even family members for services at the clinic once we get open. They have identified a provider, which is, I believe, a physician's assistant. And then we are already running mental health services out of the clinic. So any questions?
Was it a different organization before? Calitz, something?
Correct. We did start with Calitz. As Calitz and C Mar are the two federally qualified health providers in our area. And they have to work with the federal government on the territory that they're working within to ensure coverage in an appropriate manner, and there's other technicalities. Anyway, Calitz wasn't able to get change in scope from the feds because this is kind of C Mar's area. And once C Mar learned of the work we're doing, they were ready to partner and jumped on board and moved forward, and they're excited about it. And Calitz was very much disappointed because they were excited to work with us too. But both are great organizations and are going to work well with us, and will provide good support and services to our kids and families.
Are they planning to do anything with telemed services? So many of the doctors just out in the general population, and I know Kaiser does it. A lot of them are doing telemed for routine kinds of things.
We haven't discussed that, but I will, we meet every Tuesday as we're ramping up to open. So I will follow up with them on that. I honestly am sure that they are too because of the way things are right now. But I'll clarify that for us.
Thanks. Oh, it's very exciting. It's been a long time in the making, so it'll be interesting to see how things roll out. Do we have, have we had any discussion, or are we still, is it too early, about other clinics and other schools like Heritage and?
We, you know, before the world changed on us, we were talking about that.
Yeah.
And I know C Mar would be on board with us if we had the capacity to do that, and they had the clientele in that area to support it. And so it would just be a discussion about outfitting the school and, you know, initiating the process of planning around it.
Yeah. And you don't have to answer it now, but I just wondered if in the planning for the Heritage expansion that there was any thought put into the clinic, potential clinic going in there. So you can let me know later on that if you want.
Sounds good. Soon I'll touch base on that.
I was just saying, no, we don't yet, but it's not too late. I just finished that BD, so.
And the funding, the funding for the Evergreen Clinic was a grant that you were part of, correct, Jay? And I think represented, Representative Harris, Representative Stone, you were part of that. And I think that part of their interest is seeing the success of this to help try to expand that and help fund these in other areas of the state, as well as even other areas in the district.
Yeah, that's all correct.
Thanks. I'll just talk, and then you can just agree if you need to, Jay.
That's perfect. I'll just do thumbs up. So, yeah, and Representative Stone, you're in Harris, were pivotal in sponsoring this and supporting us through this. And they, I understand, are both, as he claimed, are identified very excited about this. And so perhaps will be a mechanism for supporting that through that, through whatever means that they have available to support us also. So we're really excited about getting it open. Unfortunately, due to circumstances, it's going to be a real soft opening. I mean, you know, can't do some of the things in pomp and circumstance that you would do because it is, it is, it is an exciting thing to have come to reality and will be a significant support for our kids and families. And coming up with strategies to enable it to function in the environment justifiably is going to, we're going to have to be creative, including tele-supports, but we'll make it work.
So is the C Mar group, and they're doing the counseling now?
Yeah.
When you mentioned, okay.
And they are, most of the counseling they're provided, there's very little in-person. Most of it is tele-therapy counseling. But they do do some, they do do, they do some in-person supports.
I think they're well-equipped in this county to expand into the center. C Mar's everywhere.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Jay? All right, then, thanks, Jay. We'll move on to our equity inclusion update. Is that Clarissa this evening to give us the updates?
Yes.
Yes, that's me. Good evening, everyone. So many of you kind of touched on a couple of the updates already because you were involved, which is awesome. That means I am sticking to my plan of making sure to implement you and plug you in to the areas of passion that you stated to me last board meeting. But so I'm going to start with the professional development, which is the Courageous Conversations PD. We have successfully completed nine schools. Nine schools have attended the Courageous Conversation, the Experience Professional Development, and we have gotten nothing but positive feedback from our participants. And as you all know, people enter into equity work, and specifically racial equity work, all across the spectrum. And so the fact that we were able to get nothing but positive feedback so far is very inspiring. And it gives us hope that this work is going to be something that continues and become, if you will, a permanent piece of the fabric of how we do things in Evergreen Public Schools. Secondly, Ginny had the pleasure of being able to read, and she broke it down very good. There were sixty-nine essays from adults and then twelve from students, so that's a total of eighty-one essays. We will be meeting this week, end of this week, if that isn't where we're scheduled, then definitely beginning of next week to go ahead and select our members by looking at the scores and the rubric that we put together and making sure that the representation on the committee is diverse. And with plans of having our first District Equity Advisory Committee meeting the last week of October. Victoria had the pleasure of attending our first Delt meeting, so our District Equity Leadership Team meeting that was facilitated by a staff member from Courageous Conversations, named Louise Versailles. And he walked us through the framework for systemic change as far as equity goes. And that started with the personal commitment that you make, which is kind of what the seed I planted with you all on last time, because that personal commitment will fuel or, you know, kind of be a forcing function to you as an individual to then have that work show up in your professional life, your professional commitment. So after personal, there's professional. And then the last area that your commitment will show up is in organizational, organizational change. And that's where we can change systems. And our system that we're attempting to change and improve upon is our educational system in Evergreen Public Schools. And the work that we'll be doing in the Delt meetings, because that was one of five for the year, is that we will be connecting as a team in general, you know, getting to know each other and that piece as how we enter into the equity work. But then how does that show up for us in our professional lives? We'll be talking about that. And then what systemic changes with our positions of power that we have? Are we utilizing that passion to help support our students who have been historically underserved in our district? Lastly, the, we have scheduled our beloved Community Audit debriefs as an exhibit cabinet, as well with board members with beloved community. And the school-based audits from beloved community are coming in as well. And so that is going to give us a more complete picture, if you will, of what diversity, equity, and inclusion is looking like in our district. So we'll have that. In addition to our equity audit that is being performed by Education Northwest, and they are, you know, trucking right along with getting their, the data in and analyzing. One of the things that just closed yesterday was a survey that they sent out to all of our building administrators, asking them about the recruiting, hiring, and retention process of our staff and getting their input and feedback on that so that we can use that when we get ready to make the necessary changes to have our, to work towards our staff being more reflective of our student population. So those are the, those are the biggies. I did also reach out to Rob this week to ask him to join with myself, a Washougal, a Camas, and Vancouver School District representative that work with equity in their districts to talk about the social and political expression message that we'd like to craft so that our educators, as well as administrators, or anyone in Evergreen School Public School District, for that matter, has a unified message about what our stance is on social and political expression. The closer we get to the election, we want to make sure that everybody feels as if they know where we stand on matters of that. So we're, have Rob helping with the, with the policy piece, and it's twofold. So it's what policies do we have in place right now that will support this? But then it's what's missing, what policies are missing as far as equity goes that we need to add to phase two and work on and then implement or in support of equity in our district? Are there any questions?
A question.
Great.
Who are the people from the other districts?
So we have the Equity Director from Vancouver School District, her name is Janelle Ephraim. We have the Assistant Superintendent from Camas School District. Her name is Charlene Williams. And we have the Assistant Superintendent from Washougal School District, and his name is Aaron Hanson.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Clarissa. Appreciate it. All right, next is legislative updates. Who's taking this one? Mike, do you have any?
I think Rob's probably got more to talk about now, because we've not really started anything with Melissa necessarily. It's just still the same, the same stuff we've been saying. But I know Rob's got some things to talk about.
Yeah, I need permission to share the screen. Here we are. Is it working? Let's see. Yeah, I wanted to bring up the position ranking that I emailed to you and just kind of.
There you go.
Okay, is it there now?
Yep.
Okay. Kind of explain the logic behind this and get your feedback, if there's any feedback to get. I heard last time that our priorities ought to be around special education and supports for that, equity and safety. The equitable school funding, transportation was high on our minds. And so what I did there is I prioritized student experience in the highest priority. So the top of the list is highest priority and put the single standing position that was to ask for special education on top. We, the General Assembly consolidated two sped, two sped positions into one. And the position essentially says this needs to be fully funded without, without an artificial cap. So that came in on top. And then the positions that read comprehensive student safety and comprehensive school safety. The student safety one actually grew out of, in part, our safety policy. And I figured our district would probably have an interest in a high priority for student safety and the all-hazards approach, including social and emotional learning. Comprehensive school safety was one that passed after the March for Our Lives conversations a couple of years ago. And then I included the positions around equity education systems and equity inclusion and diversity training to include PD elements and general statements and positions about equity for students. What follows there is the, more or less, these are the COVID response positions that were passed. No mid-year school budget cuts, protection for LEA, and a position privileging PD for basic education instruction via distance learning. Of course, we heard some concerns about that part. And then followed that up with the WASD consolidation, full funding for basic education, and then equitable. and then equitable school funding. One of the new position number three, I think this one is the one that reads that WASDA shall oppose any reductions in funding that that fall on districts and students that have more students further from education justice, as they put it. Added the McKinney-Vento funding. It's been a standing position for a long time. The hold harmless position, if you make a change, don't make a change that makes people lose money. And then our positions on digital equity, graduation requirements for students impacted. WASDA has, basically, these are technology equity issues. And that was the fifteen. Flexibility of grad requirements had to do with carrying forward any waivers that students might need because their education might have denied them some experiences that turn out to be a graduation requirement. And there's some waivers in there for last year's students, but I think that continues into this year now or is proposed to continue. And then the rest of this is for sort of the systemic basis. We know that we've had to make up for a lack of internet connection for at least privileged students by giving them a Wi-Fi puck or a place to come learn. And those are legislative positions that WASDA also carries. So student experience followed by sort of systemic funding, staff training, things followed by data equity is the way that I privileged it. And what I wanted to learn is whether or not that looks right, given our discussion two weeks ago or whether I had to go back to Marissa and ask her to reprioritize those choices. Any questions about that piece?
I'm fine with it. I mean, some of them kind of overlap. You know, I think that the idea for WASDA is to find out the priorities of all the districts and then they know what to advocate for. You know, I think if they take a long list, it's sometimes hard to. And I know they do that one cheater from when they go up to the day on the hill with the priorities, but I think it's just their way of finding out what the top, the top ones to advocate for. I'm fine with the list that how you prioritize them.
I just got a text from Paul Harris saying that looks good. I wonder if, as I get into this, these next two things, if Paul could be invited to, Paul could be invited to offer feedback on the two bill proposals that WASDA's legislative committee asked me to present to you. You may have seen one of them before, but the other one has to do with transportation. Let me see if he's. Yeah, he said, "I'm back on, looks good, special ed dollars." Thanks, Paul. What you're seeing on the screen here is a first draft of a first draft of a first draft of a proposal to modify the RCW related to allocation transportation funds, which inserts language around fuller partial remote instruction due to state or national emergency that makes in-person instruction dangerous to health or safety of students and staff, changing the definition of eligible students and the definition of to and from school to include the ways that we in other districts around the state have been using buses and bus drivers to bring services to kids instead of bringing kids to services. I put it into Board Docs for you to look at. And what I'm kind of looking for here is a voice of support or refinement in the language that you're seeing so that I can carry that to the Ledge Committee when we talk about it on Friday or Saturday. It's one of the two. Full or partial. The report required under section one shall separately identify the number of eligible students served by eligible to and from services. So.
This is their effort to try to match actual RCW or the way that they actually fund transportation to the kind of the proclamation that Inslee did around allowing for expenditures in transportation. So this would actually allow us to get funded. What we are doing now that this would allow us is on Wednesdays, we're delivering meals to Marion families and we're delivering, delivering supplies kind of throughout the district. So those, those routes would then be funded somehow. I don't know exactly how, because it doesn't necessarily fit in their black box of what they call their funding formula for transportation. But it at least gives us, it gives us some funding for what we're doing that we otherwise won't get any money for. So I think it's, it's a good thing.
You know, I'm moving the text around, but you've got a copy if you want to look at it. Maybe I'd hold a minute for you to do that. Any other comments or questions?
Has, has this gone through our transportation department? Or do we need it to go through there? You've looked at it, Mike?
Yeah.
I think it's awesome. I mean.
It's a good thing. I mean, it's, it's, it's the only way that we would actually receive any kind of funding for the work that we're doing. And it could potentially change the way we would do things. Although I will say our efforts have been primarily around how do we get kids into school, not how do we get stuff to them? But we kind of have to continue to see how things evolve as this year goes on. And this gives us the ability. We already have it in place. The first, the first count, the fall count would occur, I think, the week of the twentieth or somewhere. I mean, we're pushing it back as far as we can to try to take advantage of it as much as we can. And so this would allow us to make that happen.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is it looks awesome. Let's support it.
Yeah. And Melissa had asked, because this has come through. So we've shared that we support this. I mean, it's great for WASDA to support it, but we've also shared support for this. Because if we don't support it, there's no, I mean, there isn't any reason not to, I guess, is what I'm saying. Because we're not going to receive the funds unless we get something like this.
Yeah.
I think it's nice in the sense that if it gets into statute, there's, there's no way to tell whether or not this is going to flare up a second time. But in the event of future emergencies, it's not only a good idea, but it's also a good idea to count students who have things delivered to them. I think we're going to have a subpopulation of students who think that remote learning is better than whatever we could have offered in person. I don't think it's going to be a large group, but it's nice to add to statute, in my view, an accommodation to serve those students who prefer the remote or whose families prefer the remote.
I was on a call this morning with Representative Harris and Representative Stonier, and we talked about that exact thing, that I think that there probably are some families where the remote option is an option they may choose. But if the legislature were to change the rules to allow for it on an ongoing basis, I do think that that's something that will be raised at some point, and we'll see how that's handled. That's a good point, Rob.
Yeah, I'm thinking there in terms of things like, if you have a lot of remote students, what would OSPI's rule requirement be about registering as a multi-district online entity or a single district online entity? And whether the rules around that need to shift so that, I don't know, basic education includes remote components?
Well, I think ALE may completely change, you know, could completely change because we're, we're offering a form of ALE through non-ALE methods. And so that's a completely legitimate question.
Yeah. Then I got the, I got the LAC meeting next week to advise about that on behalf of WASDA, the state organization. And good. And then Paul has commented, Paul Harris said, "We need to fund what districts have done to help students and families during these trying times." So we have agreement from our seventeenth Ledge District Representative. This last bill proposal is one that came out of Ledge Committee, and I don't remember whether I showed it to everybody, but I know Mike has seen it. And I know that Paul Harris and Monica Stonier at least have seen it and it might be circulating. This has to do with student safety and sort of the response anticipated around the defund the police kind of things and concerns being raised about SROs in schools. We we've had a pretty successful SRO program in schools. And as I understand it, at least while the high schools are not meeting in person in any degree, the SROs are not contracted to come in either. So this is really considering circumstances for when we come back. Now, what Mike said to me, the bill language here just kind of proposes that instead of having a section of RCW that says, "If you have an SRO program, you've got to confirm that your SROs are trained in certain ways, and here's the list," changes it to, "We should really confirm that every employee with responsibility for safety is trained in that list," which Mike pointed out when we talked. You can ratify this or refine it, Mike, but that we do offer training for all of these things for all personnel coming through, at least the safe schools, training and a couple of other vectors, correct?
Right.
Right.
Are SROs considered employees?
No. I mean, they're contracted. They're not our employees.
That's what I thought. So because the way this reads now, it says must confirm that every employee.
To read the R people.
Every employee with safety, student safety responsibility.
Right, but if you had SROs, they're not an employee, and so it doesn't, the language doesn't meet the criteria that.
I think, yeah. It doesn't up there. It does down here.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Section two says districts that have an SRO program must annually review and adopt an agreement. And I think there's actually a deadline of this year that got disturbed by the COVID pandemic about having a public process about the SRO agreement. But here it's confirmation that the school resource officers have received the training under one.
Oh, good. Okay.
Well, that's there. And then it just kind of pushed the section four down. SRO means Permission Law Enforcement Officer. This came out of Ledge Committee discussions around legislative positions to propose to the General Assembly to go into the next session. So it's a really indirect thing, but WASDA has authority from its members to initiate legislation. So there have been some discussions about, you know, finding out who the major sponsors of the previous modification to this RCW were and getting their buy-in. If I'm not mistaken, Melissa is also aware of this idea and had some advice. So it's, it's on the road to get a little bit of traction if there's room for it and how the legislature schedules this work. And who knows about that part, given all the emergency legislation? They might be encouraged to consider. But that, those are the two bills and thoughts that I wanted to bring for discussion before we get back into Ledge Committee work. And I'll be quiet now and listen to you say things.
Um, just since this came up, I'm hoping that during our equity audit and that, that the topic of SROs and our security people, and I assume it will be, will be part of the audit process so that we have a good feeling about how our students and staff feel about the relationships that they have with kids, how that's working out on campus. I mean, every SRO I've ever met has just always been, you know, a lovely person that seems to care about kids and knows our kids. And, but I'd like to know what kids think about it and people in the schools.
If I may, so that information that you're talking about, Victoria, will come out of the second part of our, of our audit where we solicit student, student voice.
Great.
I will say, though, that I had the pleasure of providing the Vice Free Policing and Cultural Competency PD this year to our SROs a couple of weeks ago. And so I can say for sure that that was provided because I was the facilitator. And it was received well. And I feel like a lot of the topics that I shared with them and that they were able to engage in are, they didn't seem unfamiliar to them and they were open to learning more about how to do just, just that.
Great.
So.
Thank you, Corissa.
All right, so, Rob, do you, are you just asking for guidance at this point or?
Just guidance and feedback, enough statements of support or refinement. Things like what Victoria said are valuable. When we do this, I really think there's going to be a need for more than just my one voice directed at Olympia or more than just Melissa to really deliver the messages.
The thing that I'm concerned with is that we're going to see some, we're going to, I think, have more concerns about SROs on campus due to the, just what's been happening out in the general population across the United States. And I don't want us to get into an adversarial situation as we discuss this. With the public, I would like us to be able to really have a good conversation and be very clear in what the expectations would be for our security staff of any type so that as we're dealing with our equity work, that people feel safe and know that we're all on the same page here. So that's kind of where, what I'm thinking about right now.
Yeah, the statute stipulates a process that involves all the stakeholders, especially students. We can use, for this year at least, we can use the equity audit as part of that process.
That's good.
It looks like we have to have this clear statement regarding SROs. These, these items are things that I imagine are in policy and hope they're in policy. I also imagine that our audit is going to root out whether they're in policy because it goes to a couple thousand pages. And we know there's a rising fear of the import because of what's been circulating online and on the contrary. It's, it's a real thing. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Rob.
Thanks, Rob, for doing all that. Keeping track of it all.
Oh, Mike, do you have another update?
I don't have another update.
Okay. All right. Ginny, do you want to lead us through board meeting debrief? I think that's the last item.
It is, absolutely. Went pretty smooth tonight. I think that our readings went well. I try not to mess up too many of the big words. Anybody have any feedback on how the meeting went? I did want to make comment about our, sticking to our policies when it comes to citizens' comments. Because we kind of swayed a little bit tonight.
A lot of the back and forth with Representative Harris.
Yes, that's what I was referring to. We're not. I know, and I mean, I get why, but it's, you know, if we're going to have citizen comments where we continue to, you know, we can't respond, we can't engage.
But you are allowed to ask questions. And when it's a state representative and we're just thanking them and stuff, it's not, that's, we're not like going into the whole process of things and, and stuff. But I get your point. And I think we should also watch on the time with some of the comments. But that's always so hard, so we hate to cut anybody off.
Yeah.
Well, and in a virtual platform.
Well, and in a virtual platform, it's hard to really, you know, tell when someone's been on three minutes or, or longer. Plus I know that a lot of the citizens' comments, they have prepared their, what they want to say in advance. So to, to kind of cut someone off when they're reading a, you know, especially with emotion is.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't do a very good job at the timekeeping. So it's hard.
When I was looking in on the city councils meeting yesterday, when they get to citizen comments, they actually have, I don't know what the platform is that they use, but they actually have a $3, a three-minute timer that shows up on the screen. And it doesn't just stop them at three minutes, but at least there's something for the person that's actually talking to see the time and see that it's coming down. I, I didn't see them ever stop anybody when they got to three minutes. But honestly, people were pretty conscious of it and they wrapped themselves up when they got to the three minutes. So that, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how that works with Zoom or, but whatever they were using, it was kind of a nice thing.
With a timer on it, it's.
Yeah. I guess that would be a pretty easy way to do it. We just do a timer.
I feel like we finally got our citizen comments down now doing Zoom in the last few meetings. I'm, I'm feeling pretty good about it now that we're not reading emails or doing both.
Happy to have it working that way, right?
Yes.
And it is, I, I have to say, we still have people, more people attending our meeting than we ever usually get unless there's something controversial. But it's nice that people are taking advantage of, of the Zoom opportunity to watch what they're interested in and see what we're up to. So I appreciate that.
I agree. I agree with that.
Yeah.
How's that?
I mean, I don't know how they do it in the city of Vancouver, but I would imagine somebody could figure. Are you going to put the timer on for me now?
Sorry, I gotta reset that to 22 and a half minutes if it's for you.
2.2.
Yeah, 22 seconds might be better.
Yeah.
To agree there, Julie, pretty quick to agree.
Rob, was that you making that happen?
Yeah, that was me.
Oh, okay.
It's not something I'd ask Lori to do. It's just, it's just the timer windows. It's.
Ultimately, I don't think that we're having, I mean, do we, does anybody have concerns with the comments going too long or?
I do not.
At this point, I, I don't have a concern with it. I don't even know that we need to waste our time trying to find a timer.
No, I, I, one of the things and I, in person and on virtual, I have not been good about limiting people's comments because I feel like our job is to let people say what they need to say. So.
Yeah, I think the only time we really need to stick to that is when there's a lot of them. And we want to hear from everybody and every, give everybody a chance to use their voice and advocate for themselves. So I think at that, I mean, that would probably be the only time that I would say we should probably time.
Now, in connection with that, I know the WASDA guidance about OPMA and public comments has always been to specify a time up to which you take public comments, three minutes apiece. So if five people sign up, you say, we're going to set aside 20 minutes total for this. And everybody gets three minutes and then you're under the limit. If everybody sticks to three minutes, but if they want to keep talking. There's something legally comforting to WASDA's attorney about doing it that way.
All right. Anything else? All right. So I guess that is all for our regular part of the meeting. We're going to adjourn and then we will have our executive session. So we're going to sign off now. Thank you everyone for attending.